Welcome to the November 5, 2025 Planning Commission Regular Meeting. Mr. Peckins, the roll call, please.
Gasson, Hauser.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klausa.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
Kenjuk.
Here.
Murphy.
Here.
Stone.
Okay, wonderful. We have a quorum. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start with line item number three. This is public comment. So anyone who would like to make a comment about any issue or item that is not on the agenda, please come on up to the lectern. You'll be heard. Oh, faked us out for a second.
Yeah.
It's all right.
We thought you had something to share.
Rose, is there anyone online who has their hand up?
Yes, there is one person that would like to speak.
Okay, caller, please go right ahead.
Hi, Jane Turner, I'm Parkdale.
Hello, Ms. Turner, how are you?
Fine.
Okay.
I'd like an update on the construction sites that have been approved, First and Walnut, Second and Elizabeth. How are those going? And do we have any details of when they'll be started?
Mr. Peckins?
The First and Walnut site, we had a, the brownfield, as we know, so they'll be doing some remediation. I don't have a start date, but we did have an onsite meeting with their developer, me, the fire chief, Randy McCloy, our building official, and the police chief all went out there with the DPW director as well to talk about the route that they'll be taking to remove the dirt. I don't have a start date yet, but it should be soon.
Okay. And, Mr. Peckins, could you just remind us that there's going to be no heavy hauling or any trucks on First Street? Is that right?
Correct. The designated route is under the bridge, up diversion, and then out into the north of Rochester Road, or the south of Rochester Road. So they'll be going south to Avon and then on to there.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Turner, does that answer your question?
Yes, but I thought they'd done the remediation already, but that clarified it. And what about construction on Second and Elizabeth? That's, they found two buildings to build that about, oh, it's got to be eight years now.
The Mosheri site.
And I saw it, yeah. Anything on that?
As of now, the Mosheri Corporation's working with Frank R. Walden Sons on the Granary. And the Second and Elizabeth site, the site plan has lapsed, and they would have to come back to Planning Commission in order to reapprove that site plan or bring another project forth to the Planning Commission. I do have an update on the Granary site. They have submitted building drawings to our building official this week and are eager to get started as soon as he can do his due diligence to go through those plans and approve them or ask for revisions.
Okay. Ms. Turner, any other further questions?
Nope, but congratulations on the election for everyone who made it.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening. And, Mr. Peckins?
You too.
Thank you. Did I remember correctly that there's a update or there's a link on our website that has the projects in the status? Can you fill us in on that?
Correct. One of the council members was asking us to update the development tracker on the city's website. So if you go to the Planning Commission tab under the Government, Larger tab, and then on the side, there is a Rochester Development Tracker, and that has all of the updated and approved plans by Planning Commission from today back to 2023 when I started. And other ones that are older, I could pull them from files if somebody in the public would like to see those. But all of those are updated on the website with the minutes that were approved at the Planning Commission or City Council if there was a special project, as long as the approved site plan.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Okay, any further public comment from anyone? All right, thank you so much. We'll move now to line item number four, the approval of the minutes. This is consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 6, 2025. So moved. Is there support?
Support.
All right, Salvia? Discussion? Mr. Peckins, the roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klausa.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to line item number five, Public Hearing. This is consideration of a site plan and special exception approval for limited retail use at 440 South Street, the Assistance League of Southeast Michigan. Mr. Peckins?
Vidya is going to take this one, so.
Okay. Vidya, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. The request before you tonight is from the Assistance League of Southeast Michigan. The applicant was before you at your meeting in October for a preliminary hearing on this project. The Assistance League of Michigan is seeking site plan and special exception approval to put in retail sales into their existing warehouse building on South Street. I will share the site plan on my screen. So basically, the existing building size is about 12,227 square feet. Majority of it is occupied by the Assistance League, which is about 8,895 square feet, and a smaller portion, which is 3,032 square feet in the back, is occupied by man's lumber. Now, Assistance League wants to put in a furniture annex over here, and that is what they are before you for. The city council not so long ago adopted a zoning text amendment that would allow retail sales not to exceed 25% of the tenant space floor area. In this case, the furniture annex is approximately 1,421 square feet, which is about 15.9%, so they are within the limits of what the ordinance allows. This is an existing non-conforming building because the required side yard setback for this district, which is I-1 is 15 feet, and they are only approximately six feet over here. So it's an existing legal nonconformity. With regard to vehicle access, there is a shared access strike with the building to the west. We have previously required the applicant to submit a shared access and maintenance agreement with the property owner to the west. Typically, when properties share an access, we do require an access agreement because if this property sells and the future owner does not want this property to use their portion, access to this property gets cut off. Either property will be trespassing on the other ones if there is no agreement in place. The applicant has submitted copy of an agreement. This is subject to review by our city attorney, and once it is approved by the city attorney, it must be recorded with the Oakland County Register of Deeds. Previously, when they came before you, there was a question of where loading unloading activity for the annex will take place. The applicant had said that people would just park in the parking spaces and do it, which is not permitted because parking cannot be used as loading. Since then, the applicant has clearly striped this area off with yellow striping, showing it as a loading area, which is acceptable. They did provide a photograph. I do not see the photograph in your packet, however, but that photograph was submitted for my review, and this area has already been striped and designated as a loading space. With regard to pedestrian frontage, there is an existing sidewalk on the property to the east, which is the Goldfish Swim School. It terminates here. There was significant discussion on this matter at your preliminary hearing. Our recommendation was that they put in the sidewalk along the frontage at this time, but the Planning Commission was okay with the applicant signing on to put the sidewalk at a future date when the city initiates improvements to South Street. To that extent, the applicant has submitted a signed and notarized copy of a special assessment district agreement, which other properties have also done on South Street, stating their commitment to contributing financially at such time when South Street is improved and they are required to put in a sidewalk in front. With regard to parking, a total of 12 spaces have been required and have been provided. There is a barrier-free accessible space, and there is a ramp that provides, it is at grade, so it provides direct access into the furniture annex. We had pointed out that all of these parking spaces are right against the building. There is no curb, there is no wheel stops or curb stops to prevent a vehicle from hitting the building. The applicant stated that they did not want to put in any curb stops. They have submitted a letter taking full responsibility for any incidents or accidents that might take place because of vehicles hitting the building. So the city is not responsible. There is no dumpster on this property. The applicant did submit a letter in your packet which states basically, the building floor plan is separated into various areas of the Assistance League sale, such as for kids, crafts, so on and so forth. And the volunteers for each area basically take the trash back home and get rid of it. They don't dispose of any trash on the site, so no dumpster is being provided at this time. There are three existing wall-mounted fixtures on the west facade of the building at this time. These fixtures are not shielded. They have dropped lens. So basically, when you have a flat lens, the light source gets concealed. If you have a dropped lens, the light shines outwards. It does not have a 90-degree cutoff. The applicant does not intend to replace these fixtures at this time. On previous sites, the Planning Commission has required non-shielded fixtures to be replaced with shielded fixtures or shielding to be added. So the Planning Commission can either require the fixtures to be replaced at this time or you can condition it that in the future, if these fixtures are ever replaced, they must be replaced with shielded fixtures that conform to the ordinance standards. With regard to architecture, this is an old block building. The applicant has submitted photographs. I will scroll down to the photographs. It is, it is an old block building. The applicant is not proposing any change to this building. I'm sorry, the pictures are sideways on your screen. I'm going to rotate it. Our recommendation was, in the future, the applicant power wash the building or at least clean up the concrete because it does show wear. It is structurally sound, but it does show wear. So if they could power wash the building, it would make the building look that much nicer. For landscaping, they do have foundation landscaping in the form of shrubs and a maple tree up front, which meets the ordinance standards. No new signage is being proposed at this time. The applicant has been working with the city to try and provide a packet that meets what is required minimum under the ordinance for site plan review and approval. There is a letter from the applicant in your packet. That letter, however, was submitted as part of their first submittal. It's not in tune with the revised submittal. In that letter, the applicant has cited multiple times that the site plan review requirements, the various requirements, were not required for building occupancy. I wanted to reiterate once again that building code controls occupancy requirements. Building code does not supersede zoning code. Building code and zoning code are on two parallel lines. Unless state law specifically says that building code overrules zoning code, both must be followed. So in this case, the requirement for parking, striping of loading space, light fixture shielding, all that is part of zoning code, and compliance with occupancy standards does not exempt the applicant from complying with zoning ordinance standards. So at this time, the site plan is before you for special exception and site plan approval. It is our recommendation that the Planning Commission grant both of those for the proposed retail use to be located within the building located at 440 South Street, subject to the city attorney's approval of the shared access agreement and recording of the document. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, Vidya. Commissioners, any questions based on the comments and findings of the city planner?
I would like to hear from city attorney if his review of the letter, the agreement, is he on?
I am. Yes, I have both the shared access maintenance agreement as well as a sidewalk agreement I have in my possession, and I'm satisfied with them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the city attorney while he's on? No? Okay. Any other questions for the commissioners to Vidya? No? Okay, is the applicant here?
I am.
Please state your name.
Janie Isaac, 986 Churchill Circle, representing the Assistance League at 204 South Main and 440 South Street.
Good evening. Floor is yours.
Okay. On behalf of the Assistance League, I thank the Planning Commission commissioners and city council members who have supported us through this process. I also thank three community members who stepped up and saved us an incredible amount of time and several thousand dollars. We would not be here without their help. This has been a less than pleasant journey, but I will spare you my final rant. You have all heard it before. You know how I feel about this. You can do better, and I will be watching.
Thank you. Well, you know what? Before you leave, any questions from the commissioners to the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Isaac. Okay, so this is the date and time set for the public hearing. Notice was duly noticed and sent in the packet, and I know it was published, correct, Mr. Peckins? Okay, so absent anything further, I'm going to open up the public hearing, and then obviously anyone who has a comment or would like to discuss this issue, please come up to the lectern. If there are none, then I'll close the public hearing, and then we will have our discussion, okay? So let's open up the public hearing at 7:15, okay? So anyone who would like to talk about it, please come up to the lectern. Rose, is there anyone online who has their hand up?
There is no one online.
No one online, okay. No one coming up and no one being online. I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:15. Okay, commissioners, this is the opportunity for us to discuss what's been presented and possibly, if there's support, to have a motion, and then we will vote on it, okay? I'll support Klausa.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to thank the Assistance League. I think this has been a long process, like you said, and appreciate you guys continuing to work with the city to get where we needed to be. I think we're all happy we're here, and I would like to make a motion to grant site plan approval and special exception approval for the proposed retail space at 440 South Street.
Okay. Is there support?
I will support that motion.
Mayor, support. Okay, discussion. Any comments or anything? I would just like to add too to this. I appreciate very much that this has been a little bit of a protracted experience for the Assistance League, and I appreciate very much that there were often times that the Assistance League felt that there were hurdles that they were having to jump over that weren't necessarily, I want to say maybe reasonable or thought that you had to do. But I appreciate also your willingness to stick with the program, and I appreciate your willingness to follow through and get to this point. And I think it's a lesson of perseverance, and I'm very happy for you to have this day before the Planning Commission, okay? So with that being said, Mr. Peckins, the roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachman.
Yes.
Klausa.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Congratulations.
Cash register will be there.
That's it, okay. Let's go to line item number five, and you don't have to leave.
You could stay.
The best is at the very end, yeah. But go ahead, ladies, if you want to leave.
Yeah, we'll give them a moment.
You're very welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
See you later.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
It's like the wedding where one family just leaves.
I know, now we've got half the wedding is still. Can you guys like just first balance it out? No, I'm kidding, I'm totally kidding.
Alchematically, please.
Carry her out on your shoulders.
That's it.
Yes.
See you at the Eagles Club. Okay, line item 5B. We're going to continue. This is a request for public hearing. This is consideration of 215 South Main, a request for facade material modification. Mr. Peckins?
Yes, as you know, 215 South Main is...
We're going to need to close that door.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Please continue.
215 South Main is Main Street Billiards. As you know, last month, me and the building official saw that they were doing some work, and on the further investigation, they were redoing the facade. And we put a pause to it and had them submit a site plan or a facade rendering. It's going to be cedar wood paneling. The facade is up on screen. So they had wood before, but it's a different type of wood. So usually, we can do administration approval when it's same the same for materials, but this one was kind of in that gray zone of it's same material, but the look is changing enough for us to want to bring it to Planning Commission. So they have a public hearing tonight, and I know that the contractor is in the audience if he would like to come up and speak.
I would, please, yes. Please have the contractor come up and the applicant. How you doing?
Good, how's it going?
Good, just state your name for the record, please.
Yeah, Roger Barron, Roger Barron Architects. On behalf of Franklin Properties and Larry, who was doing the construction. So we're happy to answer any questions, but as you can see, we're basically doing a facade refresh. The building's become dated, weathered, and wanted to come back in, as Jeremy or Mr. Peckins mentioned, coming in with a cedar siding that we're staining, repainting the columns, added some, a little tiled base to the bottom of the columns, refurbishing the sign, and, you know, picture's a thousand words. So it's not much more to say about it, but that's kind of the final product we're going towards. We do have a sample of what we're putting on there, tucking root cedar versus the exterior plywood that was up there. We sure didn't want to put that back up on there.
Yeah, I think we'd like to look at that.
Yeah, please.
Maybe Laura, do you want to start to send it down? Yeah.
Being cedar, it should last for, well, rest of my lifetime, I guess. Sorry, can you please speak into the microphone? There you go.
Okay, so I don't mean to cut you off. Anything further that you want to?
No, not really.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open up, commissioners, if you have any questions for the applicant, the contractor or the architect?
No question.
No?
Yeah, I guess that question I would have regarding the materials. You said it's cedar and the stain. Have you selected the color? Do you have the full color palette?
This is the color that we're using.
So that is the color?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What about the gooseneck light fixtures? The renderings show different colors.
The lights, the fixtures are supposed to be repainted and rebalmed, put back up.
So same fixture, just refreshed?
Yep.
Thank you.
I have a procedural question. This is for Mr. Peckins. Now, I think you had said this is a public hearing, but I think my notes say this is a request for a public hearing because I don't see the notice of public hearing in the packet.
If the notice was not in the packet, it was mailed out for, so that is a mistake on my part. It was mailed out, they went to the request last month, and if it was missed in the packet, that was on myself. I was under the weather last week and came in on a half day.
No, I appreciate that. I just want to make certain I'm doing everything correctly here, so there's no slips. But I also note in line item 5B, it says request for public hearing. So is this in fact going to be the public hearing?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and you can represent to us that the notice was properly sent out to the public, that tonight was the night for the public hearing on decision.
Correct, and I can update the packet tomorrow.
Do you mind doing that, just so it's full and complete?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so any other questions, commissioners, before I open up the floor for public hearing?
Yeah, I have another one.
Please go right ahead. Harden?
Jeremy, is there any reason that there's not a review from Vidya for this project?
The nature of the project was what me and city manager Ben thought was minimal. It was touting that line between administrative review and a city council or planning commission review. That is the reason, I would say.
So if I understand your answer correctly, that the ordinance allows the city manager in his discretion to modify a facade without necessarily coming before Planning Commission, is that right?
If it's material to material, that is correct, if I understand the ordinance. Because it was same, similar material, but drastically different look, we wanted to bring it to city council or planning commission, I'm sorry. And on top of that, they didn't come to us asking for it. We found that they were doing it, and that was another aspect of that.
But in that same answer, though, if they're here, then obviously, the city manager has made a determination that it does warrant planning commission review, correct?
Correct.
And if that's the case, wouldn't that then warrant Vidya to go through and make a determination? You know what I'm saying? Because it's kind of like, I see it kind of like a hybrid here that you're doing.
Yeah.
You want us to review, but Vidya doesn't necessarily need to review that. Did I, am I getting?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't mean to put all the focus on you, but the focus is on you.
No, I understand. It's more of, we, I guess, wanted to get this in front of you guys as soon as possible. Not to say that it wasn't, they didn't have it in time for Vidya's review, but the small nature of the project, we didn't think would warrant it.
And I don't want to seal anyone's under here, but I think just my own concern is that if it's up here, we have to follow the steps that we would for every other person. You see what I'm saying? We just had the Assistance League who spent months and months and months jumping through all these hurdles, going through all these obstacles to get site plan approval and get us to sign off on it. And then we have a group here, and this is not any criticism to you gentlemen, but who is kind of, ah, we don't necessarily need to do that, it's our discretion. So I just, I want to let you know, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with Vidya not going through the proper procedures that we normally would for any other applicant who would be standing there.
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I would, I would just like to echo your comments, seeing as the public hearing was approved without any drawings or a memo, I think is what we got. So I also would, and it is a drastic change that I think does warrant being here and going under planner review.
Commissioner Klausa?
Yeah, I just echo what you guys have said. I looked at this today in the section in our ordinance, and I do think the city has authority, but when it, to me, it reads minor facade changes, repairs to existing things, replacements, you know, addition of landscape, things like that, and I don't think this fits that. I think it's a facade change that warrants a review by McKenna.
Okay, thank you. Anyone on this side?
Two questions.
Mr. Bachman, go right ahead.
One for the applicant. We had discussed at the last meeting timing related to the big bright light show and Dan's excavation, so I was curious to know the timing of the construction, when do you expect that to happen?
Well, if we were able to proceed, we would be starting this following, or this coming Monday and back on the project and hope to be finished with enough of it to be able to have the Christmas lights attached to the building. It's now too late in the year to be able to do any type of painting for the temperatures and that, so we're going to be unable to paint the columns and the bottom part of the metal and all that. It was supposed to all be painted. After the wood was being put up, the wood was getting a second coat. All the material's been first coated right now. It's setting in a warehouse. It needed a second coat, which we would not be able to apply now in these conditions, in the weather conditions. What we are trying to do is be able to get all the cedar up so the lights could get put on the building.
Thank you. And then a question for the planner, maybe a bit unconventional, but Vidya, I'm wondering if McKenna would be prepared to offer an opinion or recommendation at this point on the fly?
My recommendation would be the applicant needs to go for site plan approval. This is procedurally incorrect. When I read the ordinance, the ordinance clearly says, "Major facade changes, including but not limited to change of exterior building materials, shall be subject to full site plan review and approval by the Planning Commission." So they do, this is a major facade change because the tiles are going up. It is a change of exterior material. So it does need to go before the Planning Commission, which typically does need a review letter from me. Even if we were to say that this is administratively approved, under administrative approval also, it states, "All facade site changes shall be reviewed by the city planner to verify compliance with the ordinance and provide recommendations to city administration." I've not had an opportunity to review this, so I, as I emphasized in my training, process and procedure is... and procedure is everything. We need to follow the same process for every single applicant, irrespective of how good they are, how big or how small. Procedurally, we have to be correct. So at this time, I would not make a recommendation on this project.
Yes.
Let me, just make sure, Dan. Dan, are you all set with your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Kenzak, go ahead.
I guess the thing that comes to mind is that it seems like we've been rushing to get this completed for the Big Bright Light Show, but there are several steps that will not be done, the final coating, if you will, some of the painting and what have you. Is there any reason why the lights cannot go up on the building right now and then do the work afterwards, or even delay it till the spring when you're able to do it all at once?
Well, we understand that all the hooks and connections and all that have to be applied to the building for the lights to be hung up, which would have to, on a second time around, to be all removed from the building. If we were able to go through the planning commission and get approved to do this facade, we're under, to the understanding that the lights will be attached to the building up until after February. We would hope to have gotten or on the building before then. All the substrate that we have on the building, the furring and all that, is now all attached to the building and unprotected, will not survive the winter. So we're kind of in a jam now with that.
I have a question. Did you remove the hooks and the wires for the lights, or are they still up in place?
They are not in place. They had to be removed.
So they were removed for the work?
That's correct. Some of them were actually rotted off the building from being, where they were anchored at. They had to be removed, and for any of the work that we've had to do on the building, they all had to be removed.
Any further questions? But to be clear, the work that was being done candidly probably should have came before us in advance, right?
From the way it looks now?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, it does.
And I want to make a correction.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm not the contractor. I'm actually the property manager of this building. I work for the owner of the building.
Okay.
I also, along with being property manager, I do construction. We do hire a contractor that I've worked with on these projects. So to my understanding, my contractor had come to Rochester and had asked on this project, and because it was falling under a maintenance type of situation, replacing the rotted wood with a new wood, he was told that it was not necessary in a maintenance situation.
So I wasn't part of that conversation. I don't think any of us were part of it, so I don't want to get into what was said and what may not have been said, but my presumption at the last meeting was, we kind of fast-tracked this a little bit in order for you to get your paperwork, in order to go through this, and then have it before, so we can kind of do it, you know, simultaneously. I'm going to be candid with you, I'm a little bit disappointed that we didn't have a full packet for the site plan review, because that's what we ask everyone to do. And the challenge is this, if we let this go and say, okay, hey, listen, we're going to make a one-time exception for you, it absolutely ruins it for everyone else, okay? And when I say ruins it, it means that we don't have a system anymore. And you heard the city planner, we have to follow this process for everyone. So those are my thoughts. I don't know if anyone, you know, has similar views. I don't want to, you know, be a broken record here, but those are my thoughts.
Are we opening it up for public comment, and then we're going to discuss?
Yeah, I'm going to open up for public comment. Yep, that's it.
Because I do have additional?
I get it. Okay, so let's do this. First of all, any other questions for the applicant?
Well, I, can I just interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
That we were asked to submit a rendering and not a full site plan package, so we've done everything we were asked previously, so it's not as if we didn't submit a full package because we didn't feel like it. We were, we submitted what we were asked to submit.
Okay. I understand, thank you. Okay.
And is this a planning commission meeting? Is it an open meeting? Is it public hearing? Is it not a hearing? Are we coming back in a month? Like, I'm trying to figure out what we're doing.
Sure. So let me answer those questions in order, yes, it is a planning commission meeting. Yes, there will be a public hearing, or a public comment.
So can you vote on it?
Yep, public hearing, and then we are going to have a discussion. We will vote on it, and depending on that vote, it's going to determine whether or not you come back next month.
Fair enough.
Okay. All right.
Just try to get it all cleared up.
Absolutely. And make sure that you have a full understanding of it. Okay. So at 7:35, I'm going to open up the public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to make a comment or make a statement about this, please come on up to the lectern, okay? Rose, is there anyone online?
There is no one online.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one come up to the lectern, hearing no one online, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:35. Commissioners?
Yeah. Thank you. I have, so I appreciate the investment in improving the building. I think it's an important building downtown. That said, I do have concerns with the process and the design that's presented tonight. So as I mentioned, from a process standpoint, it doesn't feel like it went through the proper process for us to review it, and I don't think we should set the precedent of moving forward with an incomplete or unreviewed project, especially one that's this visible and this long-lasting. I also don't think, from just timing perspective, that we should circumvent any of our processes to accommodate lights that'll be up for a couple of months when you're talking about a facade change that'll change the potential character of downtown for 50 years to come. So I think we need to get this right, and so that's my thought on the process. From a design standpoint, I do have concerns about the compatibility with the surrounding buildings, the neighboring structures. If they're not, you can see kind of the very last part of that building, but the next, all the buildings that are left to the next road are all brick. They've got a very traditional feel to them. You're talking about Rochester Bistro, there's the art gallery, all of those are brick. And this one, to me, doesn't, the cedar planking and kind of the dark color, the tiles, they're very modern. I don't not like this, it's just I don't think it fits downtown. It doesn't preserve that character and charm that we're always looking for, and I think, especially on Main Street and these center kind of blocks, I think we've got to be real particular about that if we want to maintain that visual. And so I say, I just think it risks changing kind of the overall character and charm of that block there with the dark, the dark colors. So yeah, those are, those are my comments on the design and process.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Daniel.
I, I think this is highly unusual and very unfair to the applicant and the owner of the establishment. To me, unless I've missed something, they've fulfilled what they were asked to fulfill. So it seems to me the city administration created a big problem for this applicant that's going to result potentially in significant costs, cost increases, both to the city and to the applicant, because of the multiple iterations of the light hanging and so forth. Maybe I'm missing something, but is there a way that we can find a solution for this applicant, as opposed to saying, "Sorry, but you're going to have to take this one on the chin because we screwed up?" We being the city administration.
Mr. Peckins?
I, going off of what was discussed with me and City Manager Banda and our interpretation of the material to material, what was asked from the applicant last time was not a site plan, it was a colored rendering, if I recall. So that is what I procured from the applicant. If a site plan is needed in this situation, then I will understand that and request it as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Kenzak, anything?
Yeah. Jeremy, can you confirm whether or not somebody, I'm assuming in the building department, did approve this as a maintenance repair?
When me and Randy went out, I believe Commissioner Bachmann had texted me that morning, I think, I believe it was a Tuesday, I drove past the site on a Monday on my way to work. Commissioner Bachmann texted me and said, "Hey, what's going on?" I had a similar conversation with another city staff member that saw the same thing that Commissioner Bachmann saw, and then me and Randy went out and talked to the workers on the site. If it was a maintenance repair, then they wouldn't be putting up material that is not the exact same make and style of the material that's there. That's where it gets into that zone of, it's still wood, but it's a different style wood, changes the look, and that's how we got here. So I cannot confirm that.
Can I piggyback on that question?
Sure.
When an applicant or when someone comes into the city to ask for something like this, a facade change, is it done in writing? Is it verbal? How is that? Because I want to try and understand, if it's just a, hey, I'm just making some repairs, obviously, yes, but then to go out there and see it completely different?
Yeah.
I start to believe that, hey, maybe there wasn't an accurate representation of the scope of work that was actually going to be performed out there.
Yeah, I would say it's a mixed bag of, depending on how we get the initial communication. If it's an email, then obviously it's in written form. If it's coming up to the counter and asking, "Hey, do I need a permit for this?", then obviously it's a conversation. Scope of work comes in more when it's more of not maintenance adjacent. I also don't, I'm not, I don't deal with maintenance requirements for the building department. A lot of those are reviewed if it's light-related
Right.
or just routine maintenance-related. Sometimes I don't even know that a building's being painted, or it's being regrouted or something like that, until I see it on the street driving to work as well, and then I start asking questions and make sure they have permits, and everybody kind of uses everybody's eyes in the city to make, hey, does this address have permits? Does this one have permits? So it's a mixed bag.
All right.
I just want to clarify one point
Of course, go ahead, yes.
to the Vice Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Peckins, I think you may be thinking of a different commissioner related to the text about this project.
Oh, maybe, maybe it was Mr. Harden, I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
That's okay, just want to clarify.
All right, okay. Any other comments?
I have some.
Go right ahead, yes.
So, you know, a couple of things here. You know, number one, to me, it's very important that we have a consistent process that we follow. In terms of this, this to me clearly is, this is not just maintenance. You know, I'm thinking, we have a difference between maintenance and a facade change. To me, this is a facade change. So in my mind, we need to follow whatever our procedure is for a facade change. You know, it's similar, quite honestly, in a look that I'm doing exactly on my house, and I had to follow the facade change procedure in my HOA, and it had to get approved, the colors, the type of material, you know, is it hardy board, is it not hardy board? So to me, this feels like it needs to follow the facade change route through planning commission, and I do feel for the business owner and the applicant. This is a critically important part of the year. This is when businesses make a lot of money, when we have our lights on, and they want to be a part of it. But I, I think we would be better served to find a way to get the lights up temporarily and do the right thing with the facade change.
Mr. Stone, any comments?
Nothing that hasn't been echoed by my peers up here. Procedurally, it's backwards. I like the improvement, but again, procedurally, it's backwards.
Okay. All right. So on that procedural note, the cadence would be is that we would have a motion to approve it. So if there's a motion, fantastic, and we can see if there's support, and we could have a vote. I'm presuming, you know, Mr. Peckins or maybe even Mr. Kratt, if there is no motion, then it just doesn't go anywhere. Is that correct? Because we don't have like a negative motion, correct?
It would be, I'm not really on Jeff for that.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes, that's correct. I mean, the applicant does have a right to have an action on their site plan, but if it's, if the decision is to table the matter, that is an action tonight, but just to not, the planning commission can't just not take an action
Right.
on a submitted site plan. If it's not complete, it could ask for additional information, like you're suggesting.
And refresh my recollection, to table it, who makes the motion to table? Is it the applicant or is it the planning commission?
Planning commission.
Planning commission, okay. All right. So any questions for a city attorney?
No.
Okay. I'll leave it to the commissioners.
So I have a question.
Go ahead.
So if we table it, then they can come back at a different time, and then if so, should we, like, obviously, I made some comments about design, I could talk a little bit more about it if we needed to, so that they come back with something that would be, like, how, what would the next step be? Because I don't want them to leave here with no direction from us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go right ahead, Vidia.
My recommendation is, if you're going to table, it should always be with clear guidance to the applicant. The applicant shouldn't leave here tonight not knowing what exactly did you want from them. So if you're going to make a motion to table, the motion to table must come with clear directions about them submitting a site plan and what facade changes you would like to see. Because when the applicant comes back next time, you don't want at that time to tell them, this is not the facade we want. So before you table, with your motion to table, you need to give the applicant clear directions on what you expect in a resubmitting from them, so that you can take a concrete action at that time.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay. I cannot make a motion. So procedurally, I'm prevented from doing that. Go right ahead, yes.
So again, going back to the design, I, if we do table it and have to make a motion, I would ask, maybe even our planning, if they could work with our planner for some more options with the facade. I just, the cedar plank to me is what's holding it up. I think, I don't see any of that downtown anywhere, so I don't see how that fits in. And then the traditional kind of brick that continues on that block is our way to, maybe we can incorporate that, or, and I don't, I don't know, I'm not a designer, right? But I know what I don't like. And I just don't think this fits, again, that rhythm and pattern downtown right now. And I know we've pushed back, or not pushed back, but we've had iterations with other developers recently, even the chiropractor, we talked about the siding, we weren't crazy about the siding, so they came back with different ideas. The same thing with the Moon River Soap Company property and their development, it's gone back and forth with a couple of iterations on the design and character, so I don't feel like that's unprecedented either to work with the applicant. I just, I don't have a clear answer without maybe some support from McKenna on that, but that would be, if we table it, I would like to see a different option for us.
Vidia, you're nodding your head, is that something that's acceptable?
Yes. So, yes, as a part of your motion, you can also direct the applicant to work with staff and to work with a planning consultant, to come up with an architecture modifications that would be more consistent with a traditional downtown. That's not to say the applicant will change the whole facade, but to incorporate brick and make changes maybe to some of the color palettes, so that this building ties in with the buildings that are next to it also, and looks like a part of the core traditional downtown. It's a beautiful building, but it's, like Commissioner Kloszak said, it's very modern, which in the context of where it is located, doesn't necessarily fit in. So we would be happy to work with the applicant to come up with something with applicant's architect that the applicant likes for their business, and that is something that we believe will suit the city of Rochester, too.
Mr. Kenzak, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I have to make a comment here.
Go ahead.
Looking at the building online, and there is no brick there to begin with. So I feel that by forcing the applicant to change the materials from wood to brick is going to, you know, first of all, is it going to be feasible, because it's going to need some support and whatnot, and secondly, how much more cost is it going to add? They came in trying to, you know, fix the facade, and now they're maybe walking away with a project that's going to be tens of thousands of dollars, and I don't think that's fair for them. Whether or not we like what it looks like, yes, we can maybe change some of the materials, but to force them to go from, from what looks like staccato or something of that nature to brick, I don't think that's fair either.
Do we know it? Okay. All right.
And Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Daniel.
I'm still just stuck on this idea that the applicant is going to have to take the brunt of this failure on the part of the city administration. Is there not anything that we can do, any creative solution, to follow procedure even though maybe it's out of order? It's an improvement to the facade, clearly, it's like-kind materials. Can we make, and maybe this is a question for the planner and the city attorney, but can we, can we make a motion to approve contingent upon the planner's procedural review, as long as we're sitting here comfortable with, you know, the material and, you know, what we see on the facade? If that makes sense?
I'm going to, I'm going to hand it over to the expert. Vidia, you're shaking your head, no. Go right ahead.
Yeah. So the Planning Commission cannot approve a facade not knowing what the final iteration is going to look at. I know Attorney Kratt will agree with me. At the end of the day, I am a recommending person. I'm not the person who votes on it. The Planning Commission is the one that accepts the recommendation and is okay with the facade modification. To that extent, when we work with the applicant, I would not be suggesting that they take out all of the siding and put brick all up the wall. I know structurally, there is only so much that can be done, but things can be done. But I would not recommend you making a motion without even knowing what exactly you are approving. And procedurally also, that would be incorrect. I would not say that city administration is in the wrong over here. City administration originally saw this as a minor facade change, which allows for administrative approval. Looking into it further, it fell into the category of major facade approval, which required Planning Commission action. So for minor facade approval, the amount of information required is significantly less than a full site plan that comes before Planning Commission. So it's, it's not necessarily that city administration misguided the applicant. City administration, in their evaluation at the time, thought this was a minor facade improvement, but looking at it, it is a major facade change. We are more than happy to work with the applicant, but they must follow the process like everybody else, and the final say will be the Planning Commission, not me.
Thank you.
Attorney Kratt, would you agree?
I, I would agree, but I would also add that, you know, one of the things that Planning Commissioners need to also understand is they might not personally like the look of something, but that doesn't necessarily, you know, it's not a designing board either. They could give input, but ultimately, if it meets code, this is not a special project situation where Planning Commission has had, I guess, given a little bit more, more leeway. But definitely making good suggestions on, on recommendations is, is always warranted. But no, I, I would say that the, the planner could not, the Planning Commission could not rely on a planner's report on, on a project that, if you want the, the process to go through full site plan, then it has to be Planning Commission that approves what they see.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Yes, so I guess my question regarding if we table this is the, how the building would exist through the winter. You know, if they were able to get the hooks up and they could put lights up, my concern is the exposure to the winter through the season, would they even be allowed to put up something temporarily? I, I don't even know if they're allowed to do that. Because, you know, right now, they've started to take things down. It's exposed. The lights could cover it up and make it look okay, but what about protecting that building through the winter? Procedurally, is there, is there an option to do that?
I would say the Planning Commission can allow the applicant to secure the building against deterioration during winter. That would not take away from, the applicant can secure the building so that the building doesn't structurally suffer any damage. Do what it takes to that extent without putting up expensive facade materials. The lights can go up and the applicant can implement the approved site plan and the facade later in spring. So nothing should prevent the applicant from securing their building, and the Planning Commission can make that clear so that it doesn't look like the applicant is working on the building without approval. You could make that as part of your motion, that the applicant can do what it takes to secure the building without making it the new facade.
Okay. Then I would like to make a motion to table this agenda item. This is the item B. This is for 215 South Main, subject to site plan approval for a facade, major facade change, giving the property owner the ability to secure the building through the winter. And hopefully, maybe you can even include some lights for the big bright light show, but allow, allowing them to temporarily secure the building.
Okay. There's a motion, is there support?
I will support that motion.
Commissioner Murphy, support. Discussion. Mr. Packens, roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachmann.
Yes.
Clausur.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So to the applicant, I encourage you to call Mr. Packens tomorrow morning and get, working on that process, okay? Thank you very much. Okay. Let's move on to line item 6B. This is consideration of 329 South Main. This is a request to set public hearing for payment in lieu of parking. Mr. Packens.
Yes. 329 South Main is the former Soul Sisters Building. It was purchased by Peter Collage a couple of months ago. They are requesting two parking spaces to put in a pretzel shop similar to one that you would find in the mall. Auntie Anne's is what I think of, but this pretzel shop is already located in Novi? Romeo. They opened up in August-ish, and they've had great success in Romeo, and they're already looking to expand. I'll let the applicant kind of go into more of the gourmet pretzel shop if they would like to, when they come and talk. But this is before you for two parking spaces. A parking study has not been done yet, but we have the ability to do one like we have in the past if that is requested from the Planning Commission. I've already talked to Deputy Custer, our parking enforcement officer, to just let him know that this might be coming so he can think about what times he wants to do.
Sure. Okay. Before we hear from the applicant, any questions to Mr. Packens?
Yeah.
Richard, go ahead.
Just to clarify, we're talking about just two parking spots because I read through this, I got a little confused.
Yeah, so the, I, without diving into maybe my letter, sometimes it gets hard to explain. They had a set amount of parking spaces for Soul Sisters. They were looking to put a Pilates studio upstairs. So we were able to adjust some of the parking because this lower unit wasn't going to be developed when we were doing the Pilates studio. So they have two parking spaces in the back that are physical, actual parking spaces. And those were both previously given to Soul Sisters because the upstairs was office or an apartment. And with splitting that to give one to the base, lower level, one to the upper level of the actual physical spaces, we were allowed to allow the Pilates studio to get the regulate, recommended parking without having to come to Planning Commission by splitting those two spaces together. So now one is designated upstairs, one's designated downstairs. Because it's going from retail to a higher intensity use of a restaurant without alcohol, they need two more spaces. So even if they had the ones that were physical, they would still need to come for one. I hope that helps.
Answer your question. Okay. Any other questions for the city? Okay. The applicant, how you doing?
Good. Eric Hyder Polyarch, representing Peter Claus, the owner of the building, and the Rochester Pretzel and Candy Company.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing.
Well, I'm the architect, so we plan on, you know, renovating the first floor into a pretzel and candy company. I have a booklet that it on what the one.
If you want to hand it to Commissioner Murphy there and then she'll pass it around.
Looks like that we're going to kind of represent here. Like Jeremy said, that the one in Romeo and there's going to be a second one in Utica that's going to be opened up also that are doing very well. And so we come in through here, it's going to, we're going to make pretzels on site. It's going to be retail where there's going to be candy also, slushies, and any, you know, type of products from there to come in and sell. So to the bill, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead, please.
Uh, to the building, we're just going to keep the building as is. We're just going to paint it, update it, put a new awning in the front and some lights. So, but it's going to remain intact.
Is, is this a franchise?
Uh, no.
No.
No, it is not.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Madam Mayor?
I have a question. Do you know what hours and what days of the week so that we can make sure we're getting a good parking study for the right times?
Eleven to seven, every day.
Okay. Saturday and Sunday?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Mayor, can I presume that you're going to want to see a traffic study?
All right, a parking study that matches that? Yep, I saw Jeremy write it down.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Parking, yes, absolutely. Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion. Any motion to set this for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to set this for a public hearing at the next available Planning Commission that follows the public hearing requirements.
Perfect. Just going to repeat that verbatim.
Support.
Okay. Support, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Packens, the roll call, please.
Hauser.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Bachmann.
Yes.
Clausur.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
Kenjuk.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
Stone.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. 6B, this is consideration of preliminary plan for proposed office use at 1129 North Main for scheduling of public hearing. Mr. Packens.
Vidya will take this one.
All right. Vidya, how you doing?
Doing good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The request before you tonight is from Mr. Sterling, who proposes to convert an existing single-family home that is located at the southwest corner of Main and Fernville into an office use. The site is ZOOMed O2, which is restricted office use. And this is going to be a financial investment consulting office, so it is classified as business administrative office, which is a principal permitted use or a use by right in the O2. This is plan, this plan has been submitted for preliminary review for you to set a public hearing. I'll go over a few details of the project and a few things that are missing at this time. So the plan basically proposes the creation of a new ADA compliant ramp that goes up to the front. Currently, this little home has got a small covered porch. The applicant is proposing to take that out and extend the porch to the full width of the house. So it looks like a full porch. It looks very nice based on the facade changes. There are, however, a few basic pieces of information that must be on a site plan. First and foremost, the property line dimensions need to be there. The setbacks, even if it is existing, to all property lines need to be noted. Since this driveway is going to be used for parking, the width of the driveway needs to be noted along with the width of the access drive. We need to see the width of all existing and proposed sidewalks in order to make sure that they meet the public standards. It's a different standard for residential versus when you're making it into an office. Most public sidewalks are five feet wide. The ADA compliant sidewalk can be three feet wide for wheelchairs. Based on the parking, the applicant has taken parking calculations based upon the usable floor area. This is, this was previously a home. It's got a second floor, it's got the main floor, and then it's got a basement. The applicant has provided parking calculation only for the first floor as office. They say that the second floor and the basement are going to be used for storage. That's not how the ordinance works. The ordinance works on gross floor area. And based upon that, parking must be provided for the upper level also. It was a residential dwelling, presumably there are bedrooms upstairs, which can easily be converted to an office should the applicant need it. Based upon the parking calculations that are correctly applied to this, the upper level will qualify as office because there is no floor plan submitted to show that it's going to be converted to just an open storage area. If there are rooms, it stands to reason that it can also be used as an office. So the upstairs need to be calculated at office, and the basement can just be general storage. Based upon that, the site requires a total of seven parking spaces. The applicant is showing two inside the garage, which presumably will be used by the owner of the building and maybe one of their associates, and two parking spaces are supposed to be in the driveway. The applicant needs three additional parking spaces. Those spaces can be accommodated over here. The applicant has more than enough room. Or otherwise, they can, if possible, provide a shared parking agreement with maybe a neighboring property to meet their parking needs. But seven spaces are required for this use. The, the site also abuts R1 Single Family Residential District to the west, which is fine, except if they provide parking here, there needs to be a minimum 10-foot setback for the parking, which should not be a problem if they're going to create new parking. Floor plan has been provided only for the main level. We would need to see the floor plan for the upper level, too. This existing building is constructed of brick. It's, it's an attractive little building, and the applicant's change to create a full porch makes it, it continues to maintain its residential character along a major thoroughfare, which is a very nice look. They have submitted a photometric plan. Since they abut single-family district to the west, the light fixtures that are on the garage door need to be a maximum of 100 watts. This is just for the applicant's information, so they are careful in the fixture that they put in there. There is no new landscaping proposed. Whatever is there will remain. And the applicant needs to show us whether any business sign is going to be put along the site's frontage on Main Street to identify this as an office building. This proposal is an adaptive reuse of an existing building, which basically means it's an existing structure that the applicant is creatively using for another purpose while maintaining its character itself. So our recommendation is for the Planning Commission to set this for a public hearing in December, subject to the applicant submitting a revised site plan set that addresses all of the conditions that are listed in my review letter dated October 23rd. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you so much. Commissioners, any questions for the city planner? Mr. Kenzick.
Hi, Vidya.
Yes.
I guess the one concern I have is the pathway. I happen to measure the one in front of my house, and it's four feet wide. And one that's three probably would not allow people, two people to walk side by side. I heard you say that the minimum acceptable is three feet, but would it be more practical if it was four?
Typically, whenever we require sidewalks along public street frontages, it has to be five feet minimum. That is the requirement. This portion of the sidewalk is actually located on private property, so I had initially made a recommendation of five feet, but then I pulled up the federal ADA guidelines. Under the American With Disabilities Act, a three-foot wide sidewalk is adequate for a wheelchair. So the applicant has done what is minimum required, but you're 100% correct. A five-foot wide sidewalk will serve more of a purpose because two people can actually walk side by side on it. This sidewalk, it's only one-person sidewalk.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant here? Sir, come on up to the lectern, please. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, I'm Todd Sterling, and I live at 1700 Buell Court in Rochester.
How you doing?
You've got the address of the new place. This is my first go at this kind of thing, so.
Do not be nervous. Take a deep breath.
Basically, I moved my family here. We grew up in Romeo. I moved my family from Southern California here in 2013 because we had kids. And, you know, it takes a family. My sister lives just on Dequender, two miles from my house. And so we decided, let's relocate back home, raise the family here. Rochester schools are great, and, you know, we're excited we're here. We love this town. So this building came up for sale, and I'd been renting a place for quite a while. It's like, I, at heart, in, in the documents, it shows you, at heart, I'm a preservationist. I want to keep this town cool. And the old architecture, to me, is what makes this place. The, the building I really wanted was across the street, the stone building with the front porch.
Yeah.
And I put notes on there saying, hey, sell me this property, sell me this property. And they, they don't want to sell it, and to see that just demolished is crushed me. So, when this thing came up for sale, it's like, okay, I want to honor the neighborhood, I want to honor this town, and keep it as much as possible, just the way it is. I wanted to put the front porch on there, and, you know, the extra peak, so that my assistants and I, we can sit out on the front porch and watch the day go by and do our laptop work, you know? Most of the business that I run, it's virtual now. Half my business is in Southern California, I do Zoom meetings most of the day. The other half is here. Usually, I have like one or two people come to the office a week. That's it. And my, my staff is part-time, I've got three part-time staff, so it's really just me. It's a house, that's it, you know, it's gonna be an office. There, there are things that need to happen on the inside, but I'm trying to keep... There's a really cool honeybee bathroom in there from 1950. You know, the red, the yellow and black, and it's like, I don't want to wreck that. I don't want to be responsible for destroying that. So, inside, we're gonna, I have to make another ADA bathroom. But, you know, back to the outside, I want to honor the neighborhood. The neighbors behind me bought these places when this was a house. The doctor, the kids that I bought this from, I'd be the, I'm the third owner. This house was built in 1950, sold to the doctor, 19, dentist, in 1960-ish? And he had the intention of moving his fam, or moving his business here. That's, he had it zoned, rezoned, commercial. He had the intention of pushing out the front and making that his office, he never did. He moved his family in, and when his, he died, then his wife died, I bought the house from his kids. And to think, if somebody else bought that, they would just level it and make those brownstones across the street, you know, the side street. I don't want to see that happen. I want to honor the neighborhood and keep that back half neighborhood, all the back half, just the way the neighbors bought this place, you know, bought their places, and keep my business to the front of it, so nothing changes. The problem with this is the parking situation. And frankly, you know, I went back and forth with the city about the parking and what was permissible and what was not permissible, and was told I didn't need any new parking. Based on the calculations, I had all the parking that I needed. And so, I went down the path with the architects under that understanding. And there's a paper trail in your folders of all the emails going back and forth about it, only to find out last week that, no, you don't have enough parking, and you're not grandfathered in. And so, now, I've just wasted several thousand dollars with the architect in several months doing this project, only to find out last week that I got bad information. So, my ask is, can I come away from here tonight knowing exactly what it is that you will accept? So that I don't waste any more money? I mean, I'm with you guys, I'm a family guy, I'm, you know, that's real money to me. Let me finish, so...
Go right ahead.
I'm, I, is it Vidya?
Vidya, yeah.
Vidya?
Yes.
Showed the, the parking as two in the garage and two on, on the driveway. Well, I have pictures on a zip drive here that I can give you. I can fit four cars on the driveway, there's six parking spots, without crossing the sidewalk at all. Is it possible, with the calculations? The calculations come out to 6.24 parking spots. Usually, when you round something, .24, you go that way, not that way, right? The, the situation with the upstairs, I'm, I'm assuming you guys must have driven by at some point to see the property, that upstairs was an add-on, it's the attic. They put two bedrooms and a bath up there, because they had kids. The, the steps are so rakish up there, there's no way that you could make that upstairs ADA compliant. Just isn't gonna happen, and there's nowhere to put a lift. I was given information that that upstairs didn't count. Only the, the footprint, you know, the, the main floor that was the business counted. Went down that path with the parking, only to find out several thousand dollars later, several months later, that's not the case. So, my ask is, can I just leave the parking where it is? Leave my neighborhood whole, leave the back space green, and have my six parking spots already accounted for, and be good?
Let me try to answer the questions that I can, because I don't want to speak out of school here. So, I don't think it's unreasonable for you to walk out of here this evening with a clear understanding of what's expected. You and everyone else who comes before us should never leave here unknown or having to guess, thinking that we're gonna move the goalpost, okay? So, to that extent, if we can do that for you, we'll try. Now, questions that you've posed, I don't know if we're in a position to answer those tonight, because those would be more for city administration, the city planner. So, I guess, Mr. Packens, or Vidya, or even Jeff, what guidance, if any, can you give us to maybe continue to have a dialogue here, so we can have the applicant, you know, kind of get what he's looking for, but at the same time, make sure that we're in compliance with all the requirements that the city has?
So, to start with, when the parking calculations was done, my parking calculations were based on the square footages that are noted on the plan. And yes, I do not round up, I round up only if it's above 6.5. So, if I said seven, it was most likely the calculations showed above 6.5, but I'm more than happy to double-check that and check whether it is six and not seven. That said, I don't have an answer for you directly whether tandem parking on the driveway is something the ordinance allows, because if you're talking about parking cars back to back, it's basically going to be three cars, two in the garage, two more blocking their way, two more over here. And I'm not sure which is going to be the ADA accessible parking space, and does the ADA accessible space get blocked? Because this is the one situation in which ADA compatibility matters over zoning. So, ADA accessible parking space is a must. It has to meet ADA standards for striping, dimensions, which is eight-feet-wide space with an eight-feet crosshatch area. Zoning cannot overrule that, building cannot overrule that, that is ADA guidelines. I do know for a fact that under ADA rules for all the buildings, as long as the use is provided on the main floor is accessible to somebody who is handicapped, the upstairs with the same use does not also need to be accessible. You just can't provide the use on an upper floor that a person who's disabled cannot access on the lower floor. So, if you have office on the lower floor, which is accessible, that doesn't prevent you from having office on the upper floors also, because office is provide, being provided over there. Parking, I cannot give you an answer today without checking the ordinance, whether tandem parking is even an option, or how it works in terms of circulation, which is why I suggested if the applicant, one solution possibly is the property to the south, or maybe the property to the north, I don't know if the condos or townhouses are to the north, in that case, it won't work, but the property to the south has got a huge parking lot. Maybe the applicant can negotiate a shared parking agreement for three or four parking spaces, which basically is an agreement between the two properties to allow them to use those spaces, in which case the driveway can remain as is. But barring provision of the extra required parking as a shared parking, Planning Commission cannot just write off an ordinance requirement. So, Attorney Kroc, I, you know, I would defer to Attorney Kroc if I misspoke, anything to correct me.
I, I think Vidya said it well, one of my concerns, obviously, was how, because that would be a triple park, a triple tandem, and I don't know how they would meet the accessibility with a handicap spot with an accessibility. So, that's definitely one thing. I do recall, I don't have it in front of me, that there is a provision for a, an applicant to request Planning Commissioner's consideration of a lesser parking requirement upon certain showings. I don't have that language, but I would encourage the applicant to meet with the planner, and if he wants to make a, a, a request and make the case that a seven spot should not be required, then he has a right to ask that and make his case for Planning Commission. That's in the quote code, but I'm sorry, I didn't know that question was gonna come. But, but it's in the, it's in the code in the parking requirements section. So, there is an avenue forward for this applicant, but he does need to make the case that he's gonna comply with ADA, as well as make a case to Planning Commission that seven spots are not, not necessary.
And as I said, most of the time, it's just me, I've got part-time assistants.
And that might be one of the reasons that you articulated is to say why we want to have reduced parking, because most of the time, it is just me. Never will I have six or seven people there.
Yeah.
And if, if I may add to that, that comment, Jer, that, that's, that's fine to say, but the problem is, is it could be sold tomorrow to someone else who has six staff members, so, but that's just, you know, it may just be the reality of him today, his use, but, you know, City Planning Commission has to consider impact moving forward to not just the immediate current use.
So, to the applicant, I, I mean, we can answer the questions the best we can here, but I think the, the path forward is probably to coordinate with Mr. Packens, Mr. Banda, city planner, and maybe even to the extent, city attorney, to see if there's some, some language that you guys can come up with, some agreements, some terms, to continue to move this path forward.
Okay, I've got other issues in here to talk about.
Oh, go right ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kenzick, go right ahead.
Yeah, before we move on from the parking, the overhead, over aerial view that is on page 48 shows one vehicle parked in what looks like the side or backyard of the house, and there's probably spaces for two more. Is street parking allowed in, in terms of satisfying the, the number of spots?
Street parking is not counted towards onsite parking, because street parking is public parking. Anybody can park. When a private business occupies a private property, they have to provide parking on their site.
See, you know, talking, and let's, let's keep on the parking situation. In my opinion, the rules for ADA compliance are so that people with disabilities can get in the building as quickly and efficiently as possible, right? It rains, it snows here, the weather's nasty. If you make me put parking the furthest point away from the front door, where's the main entrance, how is that serving the ADA compliant folks, or the, the folks that, with disabilities? I mean, there are other options for parking, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping that you will allow me just to have the parking that I have. But to force me to put parking even further away for those folks seems kind of ridiculous and self-defeating, does it not?
Mr. Sterling, nobody is forcing you to put parking. The ordinance has got certain standards, and so does ADA. And as planners and as zoning, we cannot overrule ADA requirements. ADA says that somebody who's in a wheelchair needs to have access closest to the door. In fact, we are trying to work with you and suggest that you put the parking over there. Ideally, ADA would require you to pave the area right in front of the building so that somebody in a wheelchair can directly get into your building. That's not what we are asking you to do.
Well...
But we can't tell you to leave the driveway as is for ADA compliance, because ADA will not allow for that. That is not my specialty, but I'm sure the building official will tell you as much.
Okay, so let's talk about different ideas, then. My, my number one is, can we just leave it the way it is? The number two is, and I've had these conversations, why don't I put the parking right in the front there, so they can just go on the ramp? Is that permitted? Or I could put a spot next to the, you know, could I get a curb cut and, and put a spot right there on the side of the house that's ADA compliant, right? You have drawings, I believe, that show that. Can I get a, can I have two spots right next to the building with a curb cut? Right?
I...
Or, or, and, and I have pictures, I'm sorry, and I have pictures, too, showing my cars parked like that on a zip drive right here to show you, if you're interested in looking at it, different arrangements for the parking. I could use the existing driveway, the way it is, and just pave a small triangle off of the existing driveway, it's about this wide, and make a parking spot parallel to that side of, to the Ferndale side of the street, where they could just get out of the car and go on the sidewalk. Is that permitted? Can we do that? I don't have to change, I don't need a curb cut, then, if I just need one more parking spot, I could do that.
If I may interject for just a moment, you're raising lots of good questions and lots of good points. Some of them seem rhetorical, some of them seem directed more towards Vidya, and not necessarily the Planning Commission. I think these conversations and these questions might be better suited in a private meeting with Mr. Packens, with the city planner, and, and...
I, I tried to do that.
Okay, and when did you try?
Early on.
Okay.
I said, I don't want to go down a path
Right.
that you're gonna say no to.
Right.
And I was told, well, we don't do that.
Well, I'm gonna maybe say, I think we ought to. And I, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Packens, if it's possible, to maybe set up a time with the applicant, and maybe set up a time with Vidya, that these questions can be discussed in a setting where it's a bit more conducive, so there's drawings, and do you have an architect by chance?
I do, Oak Street, yeah.
And maybe Mr. and Mrs. Campbell could come to the meeting?
They've been in contact
Yes.
with, with all of this information that I have here, and that's the thing. And I've been left kind of frustrated.
I don't want you frustrated, I don't want you frustrated, but I don't think you're gonna get the answers to the questions you're looking for this evening in this particular setting. So, here's, I'm gonna maybe just, I'll give you opportunity to talk some more, but I'm gonna just give you one more suggestion here, and that's to set up a time with Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, and yourself, and whoever else you would like, with Jeremy, Nick Banda, and Vidya, and maybe sit down in one of the rooms in the back here and lay it all out there and go line by line by line. And I think you'll, you'll see some forward progress on that, in that setting. And if you don't, come back and tell us again, and we'll make sure that you get the, the answers you're looking for. Is that fair?
It's fair, the, the thing that is difficult, though, is every time something like this changes, it costs me money, and it costs me time.
I appreciate the...
And that's, that's the huge thing. I expected to have this, this stuff back two weeks prior to this meeting, so that the Oak Street folks could make the adjustments.
Right.
Now, I have to have these plans submitted tomorrow to be on the December
Right.
docket, that isn't gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen, no.
So, I'm gonna be put back another two months, because I got bad information in the start.
And I apologize for that, okay? And I want to make sure that doesn't happen again. So, again, just one final time, I will suggest and encourage you very much to get Mr. and Mrs. Campbell, they know what they're doing, you know what you're doing, get with Jeremy, get with the city planner, and maybe in the next week or so, you can sit down with them and go over this and bring it back to us, because I can tell you right now, none of us, at least myself, are gonna be in a position to answer the questions that you've got or make any decisions based on the information that's been provided. I have, you know, some information, but obviously not enough to, to get to where you want to be. And I'm sorry for the frustration.
So, the things that, Vidya, the things that you put in the email, in the underlying stuff, is that stuff that we can talk about together and probably doesn't need to be addressed with the folks here? Is that correct?
Absolutely. Our discussion is not going to slow down your process, Mr. Sterling. Tonight's meeting is procedurally correct. The Planning Commission will schedule you for a public hearing, and I'm more than happy to go over each one of these comments and try to figure out a solution that works for you, and you can proceed with it. And Jeremy correctly informed you, the city won't say no to you, because this is a principal permitted use. That said, we do have certain zoning requirements that we need to tick off, and I'm happy to work with you and your architect and try to figure that out.
Okay, all right. So, to that extent, I think what we would be looking for is a motion to set this for a public hearing at the next available opportunity, once all the documents have been submitted, is that, is that correct, Jeremy?
Yes.
Correct? Okay, all right, so that's, that's the ask? Does anyone...
Sure, sure. So, I'll make a motion to set the public hearing for Todd Sterling, for his property, at the next available time, and that, part of that motion, we are presuming that all of the documents are, are submitted in the timely matters to provide for that public hearing.
Is there support?
Support.
Mr. Kenzick, support, okay, discussion? I would just like to add one thing. If for some reason you feel that the process isn't moving as quickly or as efficiently, let us know, okay? Our city email address is out there, just let us know, so we can make sure that we're involved, too, okay? We don't want you to be held up, we don't want you to be frustrated, okay?
Okay. How, how are we gonna schedule? I, I want to walk away from here with...
You're gonna talk to Mr. Packens, and he's gonna have your contact information, and then you guys are gonna coordinate a date that's mutually agreeable with all the parties, okay?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Packens, the roll call, please.
Hauser?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Bachman?
Yes.
Klausser?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Kenjuk?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Sterling, thank you, please reach out to Mr. Packens, okay? Okay, thanks. Okay, miscellaneous, Mr. Packens, anything that you'd like to comment on?
No, sir.
Vidya, any miscellaneous items for you?
None at this time, thank you.
Mr. Kroc?
Nothing, thank you.
Rose, is there anyone online?
There is no one online.
Okay, so, Commissioner Murphy, anything?
No, now that I have been connected with the tracker, the development tracker.
Oh, okay.
I had a couple of questions, but I'll go through that. But any news on the Moon River site?
No news.
No news, okay.
Last I heard, that they were reevaluating construction materials due to cost increase, and I'm still waiting on building problem. Building plans, I will make a note to email them and ask for an update.
Thank you, and I guess, connected to that, and the question that was at the top of our meeting, when do site plans expire, how long do the folks have?
It's a year, and then they can ask for a year, give or take. If we can see that they're actively working on engineering or with Eagle, then it's kind of more of a loose year, as long as we are in contact with them, and they give us some updates, just either verbally, or I see them and say, hey, how's it going? After a year, we tend to ask them to come back for a formal one from the Planning Commission. I know that... I know that Joey with, uh, two ten, or it's either two-ten, it must be the preserves. I think he'll be coming back soon for a extension because it's been about twelve or thirteen months since he got there, but he's been working with Eagle and we know that. Um, so he should be coming back formally, I believe in December, if, um, my memory is correct, to ask for just a regular year-long extension.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Klausur?
I don't think so.
Mr. Stone?
I'm good, thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Um, yes, I just want to thank Vidya for coming to Rochester, um, on October twenty-second for our planning commissioner's city council zoning training session. It was excellent, it was wonderful. I think everyone learned a lot, and, um, there was a list of items that between Jeremy and I, uh, we have collected, and so there will be some follow-up and probably some future discussion items here for planning commission from that. Um, thank you for mentioning the development tracker, that was excellent. And then, um, lastly, um, I don't know if this is Vidya or Jeremy, but thinking about the status of the implementation of the, the master plan and zoning map, um, when it was last presented to city council, John Jackson took back, um, some actions that he was going to take, and then we're going to schedule a, um, city council session, I'll call it, on that. So have we received that information from, um, John Jackson or kind of what is, what is next on that?
I believe that, uh, we had a workshop scheduled, it didn't really work out, and then, uh, we were so busy this past week with the elections that we're looking to reschedule the city council workshop, um, for the next available date. Um, I can work with Megan to get out a, um, a doodle poll, and then also ask, um, the planners to give some dates that work for them so we can get that moving forward.
Okay, but so do we have the information from, um, John Jackson?
I haven't seen it, but that doesn't mean that it's not, uh, in the works or completed.
Okay, I just don't want to have the date scheduled and then he.
Correct.
Oh, I don't have it, I need to work on it a week.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
We'll make sure that, um, he's ready for the meeting when, and he, I think he is.
Okay.
I think we're just waiting.
Vidya, anything to add on that issue?
No, I believe John is very keen for us to actually get that workshop scheduled, have all the questions answered from all council persons so that everybody is very clear in what we are moving forward with. So we're really looking forward to the workshop, and I do know John has been doing the background work to getting everything ready. So as soon as we have that workshop, we should be able to proceed really well. So Jeremy will coordinate the date for that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harden?
Uh, yeah, I'd like, uh, Jeremy, if you could give us an update on Cottage and Pizza? I know, last time I remember seeing it, we had asked them to remove the work that they did. Um, I walk by it all the time, I see a sign up there now. I thought with the change of use, it required planning commission approval, but it seems that, that's long since gone, and they have a permanent sign up now, so just curious what the update is there.
Yeah, so, um, you guys, uh, denied the facade change to have the extra gable. Um, they came back with a sign that was administratively approved as a normal sign. They were able to figure something out, um, with Nick Banda, same manager, to have a sign that is allowable. Um, I do not review the signs, but that is an administrative review. Um, to my knowledge, that is an approved sign with no issues, um, in any of our zoning ordinance.
But it was a change of use that required it to come in front of planning commission. They did the dormer so that they could have a better sign. Why is it still not a requirement for planning commission to see it because of the change of use?
It wasn't a change of use that required a sign, the previous.
Not the sign to come to planning commission, period.
So the, if I recall, the dormer was so they could have the sign that they wanted. The, that needed planning commission approval because it was a facade change. Um, we denied the facade change based on the plans that were provided. Um, they removed the structure that was built, um, without planning commission approval and came back with a sign that was allowable in the, um, zoning ordinance and the sign ordinance. Um, sign changes and new signs are administratively approved. The reason that that one came to city council or planning commission was because it included a facade change to get the sign that they were originally looking for. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it doesn't. Maybe, uh, Vidya, you can chime in on this. Was there a site plan approval that was needed because it changed from a non-restaurant use to, uh, a restaurant use? I, I swear I remember that being the case, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Well, you're, you're.
Yeah, Vidya, that's okay.
We all jump on.
Sorry, I was talking. Jeremy, I think Commissioner Harden is asking, what was the use in that building before pizza, before Cottage and Pizza? Was it also a food service place in which case it wouldn't have required planning commission approval, but was it a different use in there?
It was a, it was a flower shop, if I recall.
Oh, physical therapist.
Okay, physical therapist. So I think that the, the way that they wave, so we also do uses to, um, businesses downtown only come to planning commission approval if they require parking. Um, the reason that they were able to put the pizza place in a former retail establishment was because they don't have any tables and there's nowhere for them to eat at the, at the, um, site. So it is just a takeaway restaurant, which didn't require them to have more parking. Um, based, and that is also a communal parking for that entire, um, complex, and it worked out in the, that aspect of it.
Hmm.
Vidya, your thinking?
Yeah, I, I am actually, sorry, I just pulled up the zoning ordinance requirements. So if it changed from retail to a food service place, that technically is considered a change of a use group, they would still need site plan approval. That's, that's how I read the ordinance unless there is a different established system. Um, because it, even though they went ahead and did their facade change, it was a use and facade change. The facade change got denied, so they had to take down what they did. Um, but I'm thinking they should have come back to the planning commission just for site plan approval.
Vidya, what's the ordinance that you're looking at?
I'm looking at section two-seven-zero-zero. Uh, I am looking at subsection B eight. It says, "Site plan review is required and shall, shall be submitted to the planning commission for review and approval." It lists a whole bunch of things. The first one is, "Any permitted or special land use within the city except home occupations." And then when you go to subsection eight, it says, "Site plan approval is required for any change use group." A use group is defined as a collection of various uses, all of which share similar characteristics such as parking, traffic generation, et cetera. So any change and/or conversion of a use as permitted and regulated by this ordinance that might result in an increase in the intensity of use by moving the use from one use group to another. Examples, office to retail, office to restaurant, retail to restaurant, et cetera, requires site plan approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Harden, can I piggyback on one of your questions?
Sure.
So when this review is being undertaken, are there findings, I would say findings of fact, or are there some type of determination that's written that says the city's decision is the, the basis for that? Would there be something in the file?
Yeah, so, I mean, normally, we do just occupancy changes, and if it changes use, then we look at, we go for site plan, and I go out with the fire, uh, marshal or fire chief, so as a building official, and we walk through the building, and that's when we determine if parking's needed, if, um, uh, building updates need to be made on the inside or outside. Uh, this is the first time that I've heard that a use needs to come to planning commission for a site, for site plan review. Um, so if that's the case, then that, I didn't, wasn't aware of that, and I don't know if administration was aware of that, because I'm just following procedures that were in place prior to me being here.
Yeah. Mr. Harden.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Vidya.
I'm not sure. Maybe, maybe there is an established policy at the city for minor change of use groups to be handled the way Jeremy described it. Uh, I know the ordinance says that, but if there is an established precedent and a process for handling these kind of changes administratively, uh, then I guess Cottage and Pizza is in line with whatever the city has been doing all this while. Uh, I'm not aware of how the city handles that part because it's a fully administrative function, but just looking at the ordinance, that's the way I read it. But if Jeremy's following what is possibly the established process that has been there for a long time, so I don't know whether Cottage and would need to come back before you. Based on the ordinance writing, it needs to come back before you, but if there is an established system or a procedure that these type of uses don't come for full site plan approval, then I'm guessing that's what will be followed.
That's where we catch a lot of the parking, uh, payment law parking, is we know that new use is coming in, and that's why we're coming, and that's why a lot of the time we don't ask for full site plan, and that's why, uh, a good example tonight was Peter Clash, he didn't review the full site plan, we were just looking at the interior layout of the building, which is similar to what we've done for a lot of the other payment law parking ones, because they're not touching the exterior facade.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harden, any further questions? Mr. Bachman?
I guess it makes me think of the Atala property. Do we have any update on the infrastructure, the gate infrastructure along Pine? Is it still the city's position? Uh, that infrastructure is on city property?
Um, I'm going to say that we have been in contact with them, that they got a survey company to come out and survey the property. Um, I have not seen the findings of that. Um, from the city's perspective, um, we haven't changed our mind on whether the, the infrastructures on our site or not. Um, I, we haven't found any new, we haven't received any new information to change that. They are still under a stop work order for that specific, um, portion of the infrastructure, but they are allowed to do regular maintenance to the building.
Thank you. And has, has M.D.O. been involved at all regarding the Main Street?
I, again, have not seen any information that would, uh, lead me to believe that nothing has been provided to the city.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kenzick?
Nothing here.
I'd like to follow up on Mr. Bachman's question. So if I heard you correctly, we have found nothing to suggest that those gates over there in Pine are on Dr. Atala's property, but rather they're on city property, correct?
Based on Oakland County records, they are on city property, I believe.
So the question then becomes is, when, when, when did we learn that?
I don't think we ever questioned that.
Okay, so if we don't question it, and we've known it for, in perpetuity, we've never been disputed about it, what are the steps that the city is going to take to tell that property owner, you need to remove your stuff from the city property? I don't understand why we're not doing that, and why we're letting a property owner put things and materials on city property and the city's not doing anything to push back on it.
Yeah.
And I'm not here to ganging up on you, Mr. Packens.
No, of course. Um, I think that the last time that we had given direction to the property owner, we disagreed on whether, whose property that was on, and we allowed them to get a surveyor out there so they can get their own information, because we go based off of Oakland County information.
Right. Has he done that?
We have been, I have been informed that a surveyor has been out there. I have not seen the findings. Um, I can, through the right channels, reach out to the property owner and see what the next steps are, and work with Attorney Krot to, um, successfully continue that conversation.
Call me a cynic, but I would suspect that if he had a piece of paper that said that he was in the right, he would have came here and waved in front of your face already. So my hunch is that he doesn't have anything to support his position, and therefore those gates are on the city property. I'm just hoping that sooner rather than later, the city sends him a message and says, you need to remove this, these gates from city property with an X amount of days.
Do we know that?
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Oh, I do. When we're talking about the processes, you know, when the facade changes and stuff, does it make sense for the city to maybe consider some process in writing? So when someone comes in and says, hey, I want to do a, a, a change or repair, that it's in writing and everyone understands what that proposed scope is and it's signed off on, so when there is a question down the road, hey, that goes above and beyond what we had talked about, or that goes above and beyond what we discussed, we have something in record. Is that maybe a, a process that you guys would consider?
Yeah, of course. I mean, I think that all processes can be updated and may tweak to be better and more efficient. Um, I don't have any, I came into a city with processes, and if something doesn't work, then I'm more than willing to change it.
I'm just giving that phone out there for consideration.
Yeah, I think that that case was very, it was one of those, which, which one came first, because we found then that they were doing something that they sure had, say, approval for, but then between minor and major facade changes, it's a slight gray area depending on how you interpret the zoning. Um, me and Vidya had a conversation about it earlier today, and she was wondering why it didn't come to her, and me and Nick had a conversation about the same thing, and got to the point where, uh, more information's needed, and we will request that information as planning commission has asked.
Okay. No more grilling Mr. Packens for the night. Okay. Uh, any public comment?
He picked a good night to be gone.
What's that?
Said Nick picked a good night.
Yeah, doing what my bosses are doing.
Yeah, oh, I got questions for him, don't worry. Yeah, I'll text him later. Okay, so any public comment? Is there anyone else that can make a public comment? Anyone online? No? Okay.
There is no one online.
All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right.[1748.83]